Good evening. We want to welcome you here tonight to our Ogden City Council meeting for March 20th, 2012. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present. And we will now have Vice Chair Blair lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. The first is the minutes of the work session of October 25th, 2011. Councilmember Wicks.
Thank you. I've reviewed those and found them to be correct.
And the minutes of the joint study session and regular meeting of November 15th, 2011. Councilmember Gockner.
Yes, I reviewed those and found them to be correct and would make a motion to approve.
I'll second him.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Van Huser to approve these minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? These minutes are approved.
Chair Garner, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move Item 6, Administration Reports, to occur before Item 5, Public Hearings.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Hayer to amend the agenda to move Number 5, Administration Reports, prior to the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 6. Number 6. And for Number 5.
And 6 in Number 5. With those changes, we'll amend the agenda. So now we'll move into the Administration Reports. First is the Loan Loss Guarantee Program, and Mr. Bride will be presenting this.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council and administration, this evening I will be providing a summary of the Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant consolidation, excuse me, five-year consolidation plan amendment request change. We are specifically requesting an amendment which requires a 30-day public comment period for a loan loss guarantee change and its associated budget modifications. The process for this new loan loss guarantee is essentially this. The city would take its, would take a package of six community development block grant loans that it currently has. It would package those and sell those to the Ogden Reinvestment Corporation, the ORC. The ORC would then, in return, pay the city $300,000, the value of those loans, which would then go into a loan loss guarantee fund. That loan loss guarantee fund would then be used to leverage through the Community Reinvestment Act and a consortium of local banks, $3 million in capital to fund additional loans, which would be administered then by the Ogden Reinvestment Corporation. The process, that is the process. I've got a brief presentation here that I'd like to provide, and we'll go to, okay, so the first slide here really points out the goal, which is capital creation. Capital creation leads to job creation. If we have additional, of course, capital to lend to businesses, that can result in additional job creation. Let's go to the next slide. Over the last decade, we've seen a real eroding of the monies that have come to local governments for community development block grants. And, you know, this can be seen in this, in this graphic. It's an ongoing process. We don't imagine that that's going to change. That source of revenue is declining. Next slide. With these funds, we've been able to average approximately 30 jobs, create 30 new jobs every year through our Community Development Block Grant Loan Program, about 30 jobs every year for the last decade. Next slide. These loans have gone to companies that employ less than 100 individuals and have been instrumental in keeping them in business and helping them to expand and to create additional jobs. That segment of our corporate population is only about 26 percent, the rest about 76 percent. So that group of businesses that employ less than 100 employees are a significant part of our Ogden business base. Next slide. We've done a little analysis here to show you if we continued through the same process that we have in the past with our Community Development Block Grant Funds, we would expect to see about 30 jobs a year through 2018. In fact, possibly a little bit of a decline by 2018. With this new infusion of $3 million of new capital coming from Community Reinvestment Act funds and the consortium of lenders and our loan loss guarantee, we would anticipate for each of those years, 2012, '13, '14 through 2018, significant increases in our potential to create jobs within Ogden City. Next slide. In a sample scenario, if a company came to us and borrowed $100,000, they would have that loan guaranteed by this loan loss guarantee fund of, with $10,000. That is monies that have come through the process and then back into this loan loss guarantee fund. The key points to remember are that the outcome is the request that we're making is revenue neutral. We're not asking for any general revenue funds to come into this. There simply are funds that are coming through this process to a different program. That program would require them for a loan loss guarantee. The funds would remain under the control of the council. And it's important to note, we won't be back next year to make a similar request. This is a one-time request for this amendment change. That concludes my summary, and if you have additional questions, I'd love to answer your questions.
So what you're suggesting is that the program would be able to develop the revenue to continue on with what they would like to do then?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
The, the program is set up that the revenue that they would generate from these loans would continue to give the funds to that organization to continue to...
Correct. So the ORC would continue in its efforts to loan this, this $3 million capitalization of funds as long as they had use of that $300,000 loan loss guarantee.
So that's why you're not coming back next year, is that right?
Right. Am I correct that all these loans will not be grants, they will be paid back to the city?
That's correct.
When new financing has been arranged in this financial gap, is that correct?
That's correct.
And with what Susie just said, if there is a default, explain that process.
As with any loan program, there is the possibility of a default, and these funding, these funds are at risk potentially for that type of a loss. In the graphic that we, that I placed up earlier, we had accounted for that loss, and still with our estimates of those losses, we still see significant job creation and significant capital well into 2018.
Thank you.
I know other cities use this, we're not the only city to do this, correct? There are other cities that do this. Ogden is one of the most innovative cities in Utah and in the Intermountain area, actually. But this is not extraordinary, but it is something that other cities do.
My understanding, too, is this is really to help create that small business. You know, they employ less than 100 employees, they're really bringing in that small business into the community, creating jobs.
That's correct. That's correct. And it's, so it has significant benefits in our downtown area, in other parts of the community, but our focus really is in this, in this downtown area.
Would there be any sort of annual reporting about businesses that have been assisted by this program and where they're located and what kind of jobs they're bringing into the community?
There is an annual report, and that could be provided to the council each year.
That would be...
Very beneficial to have that, because, I mean, we, we truly believe in helping our citizens create that small business and promote that within our community and create jobs, but it's important for us, too, to have that accountability.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a clarifying question? I had a slightly different understanding on the approval of this particular resolution, that this would not require a 30-day noticing period, that this could be approved tonight, is that correct? You indicated that it would require a 30-day notice.
I would, I would defer to Ward Ogden and to Kathy Fuentes.
It, it doesn't require a 30-day notice. I can answer that without Ward having to get up.
Thank you. So the, the council can consider this tonight?
That's correct.
And I, just one other note, that if, if you did desire annual reporting, I would suggest that you include that in your motion, so it's clear on the record.
We, we might be able to also suggest that it might want, we might want to make it in coordination with the Annual Action Plan when we come in every year. We could just make that a reporting time.
I think, I mean, we'd be interested in, you know, businesses assisted, where they went in, the number of jobs created.
It's created.
If there've been any defaults.
What's the cost of the loan, you know, what's the loan amount, things like that? That's pretty standard, huh?
Any other questions for Mr. Bride? Okay. At this time, we'll accept public input regarding the Loan Loss Guarantee Program. Come up and just state your name and...
William Bryant. If, I, I don't understand the process too much, but if you could tell me, who owns the properties now that they're talking about? Is it the Ogden City or that's going to go, that's going to go put into control of this, these bank consortium people?
Okay. We'll have to defer and see if we can get in.
These are funds that are Community Development Block Grant monies that are lent, that are lent to businesses, and so they don't necessarily involve properties. So they will be, the loan packages themselves will then go to the ORC. The ORC will then provide that $300,000 payment back to the city, which will then use that as a loan loss guarantee fund.
And my understanding is this is just to help a new business that may be coming in or a small business that wants to locate here?
With loan funds.
And just get them going?
Yes.
About property, it's about a business.
There would be no properties guaranteeing the loans.
No, right.
Funds that we're putting...
One other clarification, I, my understanding is that the report is, there's already a report that you get annually that would have this information in it. It's called the Cape, the Caper, the Great Caper. And so this information you're looking for in a report actually already comes to you, and you will have that information.
Okay. Thank you.
But it would need to be specific to this program as well. This is new, so...
But it will be part of that. It has to be, because it's part of this annual action plan.
We make sure that it's part of that Caper plan.
Yep, it will be.
Okay. Okay. Further comment from the public?
I have a question. Okay. Six A and B, now is that, deals with anything with the consolidation plan from 2010 to 2015? Is this what we're up to talk about, the public?
You're talking about the CIP program, I think.
Well, A, B, that's quite a bit there, so we're trying to figure this out. Can you just, can we get up and talk about our public opinion about this plan, consolidated plan 2010?
That's what, that's...
This is what, okay, because we're looking down here, it says public comments, eight. What would that refer to? On Number 8?
Are you meaning Number 9, sorry?
No, 8, public comments. This is an opportunity to address, would that mean for 6?
For right now, we're accepting public input regarding the Loan Loss Guarantee Program.
So that's Item 6, A, B?
Mm-hmm.
Six A.
Six A.
So then, once, once we get through that and we get to B, can we come up and talk about that after B?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Further comment?
Oh, sorry. If there's no further discussion, I would make a motion to approve the Loan Loss Guarantee Program with additional language requiring an annual reporting in conjunction with the Caper or the Annual Action Plan or both.
I second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Stevens to accept the Loan Loss Guarantee Program. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Huser?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. This, it passes. Next is the Central Business District Infill Program, proposed Resolution 2012-5. And Mr. McConkey?
To call for further discussion before the final vote.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the City Council and Mayor Caldwell. We appreciate your efforts in, in coordinating what is going on this evening because they are interrelated and it is, can be challenging to understand the order of things and which require a 30-day notice and why. This particular resolution that you have in front of you is to amend one of the existing programs where we use Community Development Block Grant. And it is, it's called the Central Business District Infill Program. There's a $200,000 budget tied in with, with this program. And the genesis of this program was it started on 25th Street, and it was called the 25th Street Infill Program, and it was used for brick and mortar construction of buildings on 25th Street. It was thereafter changed to expand to the Central Business District, that there were not projects readily available on 25th Street. There was sometimes a need existed, but the property owner was trying to put together a, maybe a million-dollar-plus project, and it was taking several years for that to evolve. And so we said, we would like to expand the use of these funds throughout the Central Business District, and it was the Central Business District Infill. What we're proposing this evening is to change the eligible uses of that money and expand it to include other CDBG, Community Development Block Grant eligible activities. Initially, it was more of a construction-oriented program. We would like to use these funds for other activities that are eligible, such as the job retention and job creation activities. You can use block grant monies to benefit low and moderate income persons, you can use it to eliminate slum and blight, those are the, the main primary activities. So we'd like to expand this, this program to include a couple of, really a couple of things. One, to expand it to use, to create jobs and low, and job retention, and also that would allow us to use the, the funding for the program that you were just considering, the one that Mr. Bride was presenting, that the funding under this program could be used for loan guarantee programs. So it's a, it could be used for loan guarantees, but that would also have to be tied into a job creation, CDBG eligible activity. So that's what we're proposing. We're not proposing that the, the budget be increased, we're just proposing that the eligible uses be expanded to include other block grant eligible activities. Hope that was succinct and understandable. Do you have any questions? I will take my seat. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, we will accept public input regarding the Central Business District Infill Program, which is the changes to eligible activities.
My name is Jesse Strow. I'm also here to speak about, about the five-year plan for 2010, 2015. As a citizen of Ogden, I would like to be well informed of what is going on in my community. Unfortunately, the rest of the community in Ogden doesn't know about the funds that are available for housing that are specially geared for low-income people. Well, given the fact that most people work full-time, is there a possibility that the Community Development Department could extend its working hours Monday to Friday until maybe 6:00 PM or 7:00 PM to discuss these housing funds that are available to me and my community? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Further comments from the council member, oh, excuse me, come up.
Okay, I've got three minutes. My name is Virginia Hernandez, resident, I'm going to go through this as fast as I can. Whenever the people are well informed, they can be trusted with their own government. Thomas Jefferson. The Citizen Advisory Committee, the Annual Action Plan Amendment and the Budget Opening should not be passed for the reason it has not operated properly by HUD's guidelines. The public process gives the public their input. The Citizens Advisory Committee has been defunct, in my opinion, for several years up until this day. Resolution 2012-2 says, whereas the City of Ogden has deemed to the annual five-year consolidation plan 210 through 215 and the Annual Action Plan 211 through 212, and in accordance with the federal regulations, has made these amendments available for public review and comment for the period of 30 days as required by said federal requirements, regulations, and Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee. All anticipated programs and major projects are submitted for review to the Citizens Advisory Committee for comprehensive planning, for example, the weed and seed program in the past, budgeting and implementation review. The Citizens Advisory Committee acts in an advisory capacity to the community and the Economic Development Department. I have asked the Community Development and CAC for the updated guidelines. I was speaking for a nonprofit and resident since March of 2011. We had grave concerns about this committee and its operation, about its members and the community being excluded from many opportunities for, for bettering their lives. After several times being ignored by this form of government on all levels, we were advised that this was unfair treatment according to HUD policies. This month of March 2005, we finally obtained proper information of the guidelines. When I studied the Citizen Advisory Committee outline as of today, it was not working properly, in my opinion. I believe the Economic Development and City, Citizens Advisory Committee's input, this plan for 2012, 2015 is inconclusive. With all due respect to Mayor Caldwell, my question is to Mayor Caldwell, he can't answer now, but at another time, what is your administration going to do about this? Many qualified citizens did not receive their opportunities that was targeted to them with the federal funds since 2005. We have researched going way back then with all these consolidation programs, who was on these committees, what was done, what was not done for this committee, and this money comes in from the federal government that should be targeted to them. Again, we're 2012, so it's kind of a different way we have to deal with this. Thank you for your time.
My name is Chris Miller. Thank you for giving me the chance to come here tonight and speak about my concerns about the five-year plan 2012, 20 through 2015. I have the opportunity to vote each election and, oops. Okay. I have the opportunity to vote each election, and it is another chance to have my voice heard. That is why I vote in city elections. This form of government informs us that council assists to sever, for several purposes. One is, you will decide what services to provide and at what level to respond to the needs of citizens. I have seen through the years that the federal funds for the neighborhood economic development programs have not properly informed me and others, excuse me, community services and not to respond to the needs of the people. Could not, they could not understand why certain areas of the community are, were given much more. I believe the reason is because committees like CAC, Citizens Advisory Council, could not represent us fairly. These members did not follow guidelines provided, they could not know the needs of people like me. The Citizens Advisory Committee should be chosen for this plan, not, and not what happened in past years, and leave me and others without a better life. Whatever the people, whenever the people are well informed, they can be trusted with their own government. Thomas Jefferson. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further comment on the Central Business District Infill Program?
If there are no further comments, I would make a motion to adopt.
I second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner.
And a second from Councilmember Stevens to adopt the Central Business District Resolution 2012-5. It's a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Huser?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. And any further discussion on this issue? Or is that?
Further discussion before the final vote.
Or the vote. Okay. Okay, this motion passes. Okay. Now we'll jump to the public hearing. And this first one, six dash A, for the amended agenda, is the Amendments to the Annual Action Plan and the Five-Year Consolidation Plan, Proposed Resolution 2012-2. Mr. Ward?
Mr. Chair, members of council? I go by both. Each year, Ogden City receives entitlements, meaning that our community is entitled to receive federal funds through a formula that has been decided by Congress for two community development programs. One is called the Community Development Block Grant, and the other is the Home Program. And a requirement for our receiving those funds is that we create a plan for the use of those funds. It involves an investigation and study of the needs in the community and developing strategies for addressing those needs on a broad basis. And then each year, and that's a five-year plan, the latest plan was adopted in 2010 that runs through 2015. And then each year, we adopt an action plan that implements those strategies. And that action plan includes the budget, the action steps, and the goals for that year. And that was adopted for the current year, fiscal year ending 2012. Was adopted about a year ago, in May. Each year, we go through the process of amending that action plan, and it's necessitated by the fact that we don't know all of the facts up to the date of the adoption. In other words, we make some estimates. Some of those numbers in the budget are estimates, such as the amount of funds that we expect to be carried over from one year to the next for projects and saving for projects. We also make estimates of the program income or the loan funds that are being repaid to us during that fiscal year. We have estimates. About this time of year, sometimes a little earlier in the year, we come before you with a request to do an amendment to that action plan that brings those dollars forward, clarifies the situation relative to the carryover and the program income. Sometimes we also do program amendments, which you've just adopted, a new program called the Loan Loss Guarantee Program and the change to the CBD infill program. So those are relevant things to bring forward and include in the amendment. So the item before you today is the Action Plan Amendment for the year, for the year 2012. And it's the First Amendment, so we call it Action Plan 12 Amendment Number One. And we're going through that process. We've already concluded our 30-day comment period, so that was the point of confusion, I think, on the Loan Loss Guarantee Program, that in fact, in order to include that within the context of this amendment, that we would have had to go through a 30-day comment period, and we've already done that. So now we're at the end of that comment period and have had the comment on that as well, or at least gone through that period. Again, back to the process, I've talked about the program income that we get, the loan, we make estimates at the end of the year for the following year, and then at some point during the year, we have a more firm estimate as to what we think that's going to be. So we clarify that, we clarify the carryover dollars as well. Generally, in terms of how the amendment is put together, the items, the money that's carried over from one year to the other stays in its line item. It doesn't change from one item to the other. That's the general rule. The funds that are budgeted in one year generally go to that line item and carryover. And in a lot of cases, those funds are put together and pooled from one year to another to accomplish a larger project. Sometimes we have projects that we intend to undertake in one year, and we start the project and don't finish it till the following year. So that's a common occurrence as well. And then at the end of the comment period, we hold a hearing, which we're doing today, and adopt a resolution, and then send our action plan and consolidated plan amendment to HUD. So we expect that if this resolution is adopted, that we would send those off to HUD in the next few days. Some of the highlights, because it's a document that is carried over year to year, if you remember, the action plans are already specified in the five-year plan, and so we're simply carrying out each year's goals and objectives and strategies. So it's not a new thing that we're bringing forward. In addition, it's not really a new process. We undergo this process every year. So the things that I'd like to highlight are some of the things that are maybe a little out of the ordinary or maybe noteworthy in this amendment. One of those is an amendment to our AI, we call, it's the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. We do these, it's not a function of the action plan or the consolidated plan, but it's done in conjunction with them and goes to HUD. They expect us to have an analysis and to carry forward that, those ideas. And they've given us some-
Do we handle that analysis? Is someone, do we hire that out? Do we?
We've done that ourselves, yes. We had some feedback from HUD, and they requested or suggested that we coordinate the goals from the consolidated plan and the action plans more closely with that analysis. And so that's basically what we've done. We've just kind of made those measurable goals and put them as a part of the analysis. So when you adopt that, we're kind of putting it together and riding it along, so to speak, with the action plan. Another item is, of course, we've talked about the CBD infill program being changed. Because the CBD infill program existed and had a budget item, it's, the amendment to the program guideline is important to note, but it's not, it's not a significant change in terms of HUD, how HUD would look at it. So that's included in the Annual Action Plan. The Loan Loss Guarantee Program being a new program, setting new goals, and having a new operation altogether, sort of rises to the level of being a new strategy and would then require an amendment to the five-year plan to put that in place. So that's why you're seeing a difference between the consolidated plan being amended for the new program and then the action plan being amended for just changes to the budgets and changes to the program guidelines that already exist. So those two programs. And then there are some cases in which some of the, some of the numbers in the budget are, deserve some comment. There are some, some changes to, first of all, the entitlement funds. The budget that we assumed we would have from the federal government for the block grant and the home programs, Congress hadn't made up their mind yet. In fact, they made up their mind just as the council was adopting our budget last year. And so they asked us to put in the year prior's numbers as a guess. And so that's what we did. So when we got the new numbers in the last summer of 2011, we're now putting those real numbers in the budget. And it was a significant cut. It was a 16% cut to the federal Community Development Block Grant and a 12% cut to the Home Program. That's why you see those numbers go down. Then in the City Revitalization Fund, in October, excuse me, November of 2011, the council placed in the budget some, some general fund money into the city revitalization that was earmarked for unit reduction program and infill housing program. So that was a $550,000 budget increase. Those are basically the big numbers that relate to the entitlements. Program income increases significantly for the Loan Loss Guarantee Program, and that comes from the sale of some of the existing Community Development Block Grant-funded loans that came through our Small Business Loan Program. So they sold $300,000 worth of, I've got an exact number. It's just over $300,000 in the CBD, CDBG, yeah, about $305,000. We've also received some payoffs from some homes that sold that we were, that we constructed. So that added some program income. And then, as I mentioned, the carryover funds generally roll right into the same line item. And there were some significant carryover items, but that's basically because we were saving money for projects, and it's not new money, it's just carried-over money. In the expenditure side, it's probably important to note a couple of things. Again, the Loan Loss Guarantee Program is now in place, and so you'll see a line item for the Loan Loss Guarantee Program, that $305,000. Again, the infill and unit reduction budgets went up in relation to the money that was given and, of course, the homes that were sold. So that basically is the summary of the high points of the budget and the raises and lowering, kind of the adjustments that we've done.
Mr. Ogden, would you mind, just back to the impediments, the two specific that were identified, what are some of our action plans or action items to address those two? The first one was to disseminate fair housing information out to the public. And the second is to promote economic development opportunities for citizens and work with nonprofit organizations who serve low-income or moderate-income residents?
I think off the top of my head, I can answer a few of those.
Okay.
I'm trying to find it.
That's-
It's, oh, there we go. I've got it.
Thirty-seven.
Some of the things that we're currently doing are, we're creating a website for fair housing. We attend and coordinate with numerous communities around the state and with the HUD office in Salt Lake regarding fair housing education and disseminating information regarding fair housing education. There's a strategy for working with the local Hispanic chamber to promote loans and get the information out regarding our small business loans.
Will that website be on the city's website?
Yes.
I think there is some brief information that's not available in Spanish, but there is a section on the website.
Would you explain to the audience or the community, the unit reduction and infill program?
Okay.
Just kind of give an overview of that, please?
Sure. Yes. Unit reduction is, it's a good example of a unit reduction project is homes that were formerly large, many of these were the Victorian homes, say, on Jefferson Avenue, that were occupied and owned by folks with a lot of money at one point. And then, over time, those homes were vacated and converted to apartments, kind of carved up into units. And sometimes those don't operate well, and the living conditions for the tenants aren't good, and they're not maintained well sometimes. We found several of these cases to be on the 2,500 block of Jefferson, and we've done some of those projects there. So we basically convert them back to single-family or code-compliant owner-occupied houses. So that's the unit reduction. Infill housing has to do with backfilling new housing into existing neighborhoods. And that can be done on vacant lots where new houses are constructed, or in some cases where homes have kind of expended their life and they're no longer functional and need to be taken down. And so some homes are demolished and new houses built. So that's basically those two programs.
In our work with HUD, when you make your reports, you have to meet their guidelines that they have set, is that correct?
Oh, yes. And in fact, I was going to bring that up in relation to the Loan Loss Guarantee Program. Each of our loan programs, and each of our programs, whether it's a loan or just an expenditure of funds, has to comply with, we have to document that we've complied with the federal guidelines. And we do that on an ongoing basis through a computer program that we have to, it's a database that we have to enter all our projects into. And at the end of our fiscal year, we produce a report called the CAPR report, which you all receive, and that is a summary of what we've done throughout the year with all of the federal funds. So because the Loan Loss Guarantee projects are going to be federal-funded, because the guarantee funds are federal funds, they will also be entered into the system, and you'll receive the report regarding accomplishments in the CAPR. So they will automatically be in the CAPR, along with all the other projects that we do.
So if we had a program that wasn't adhering to those policies, they would let us know? Or if we were using funds in a way that they would not justify, they would let us know in that aspect there?
That's right. They do, they do a monitoring through that, through that reporting system, through the online reporting system. In addition to that, we receive constant monitoring through, through visits from our HUD representatives who are in Denver. And so we have monitoring visits, and they pour through our files and look at our documentation and make sure that we're doing things right.
And the housing money stays within the housing program? We don't divert it to other aspects of the city?
That's right. So what we recommend, I wanted to give some clarifications on the resolution, if I could. Because we're at the end of the comment period, and the resolution includes a copy of the Action Plan Amendment and the Consolidated Plan Amendment. At the end of this, we now have a few dates to insert, and so we wanted to just make sure that when the resolution, and if the resolution is adopted, that it also makes reference to the updates. And they're very simple. That we basically take the draft off of it, because we stamped it draft, and so remove draft, and it's now a final. The date submitted to HUD has been, would need to be changed from March 7th to March 20th, which is today, which is, of course, the day it would be adopted, hopefully. In the context of the public process, the Citizens Advisory Committee had their meeting on February 2nd, so that would need to be an addition. It's basically just filling in a line that we'd left blank. The public comment period started on February 15th and ended March 16th. And so those are the, those are the additions to the, to the action plan and consolidated plan that would be attached to the resolution. So our recommendation is that you approve the resolution adopting the draft Annual Action Plan, Amendment Number One, and the Consolidated Plan, 10 through 15, Amendment Number One.
Mr. Chairman, I also make a comment. Just wanted to mention, for the record, that the council is responsible for administering a financial audit annually, which does include an audit of these funds, the federal funds as well. And that's all included in, in an annual report that the councils already considered, and it was found to have no deficiencies in this area.
Good to know. Thank you. And Mr. Ogden, with Councilmember Wicks' comment too, can we look into and encourage some of this information as we visit with some of the Hispanic populations and other groups to have that information out in Spanish for them?
Very good.
I think you do. I mean, you've had booths at the farmer's market and some other things- I mean, you've had booths at the farmer's market and some other things too. You know, I, I see your staff out in the community, there just isn't anything. And I think the state has some information. I mean, there is information out there, but maybe putting some links to it so that it's easy to find.
And our website, we're, we're still working on that, and we haven't translated our website yet, because it's not quite done, but the state has a great website, which we do in fact link to.
And you're linked to it, so I think maybe just putting, some, put in Spanish that there's a link to that information there. That might be helpful, too.
Right, that's a good idea.
My concern is that not everybody has a computer.
True.
You know, and I don't know that a lot of people know how to maneuver to find that information. So I think it would really be smart for the city to figure out another way to communicate this, and if it happens to be Mrs. Hernandez Reyes or whomever, or the committee, you know, our advisory committee, I think that would be really a smart thing to do.
Sure.
And there are computers at the library that are really well-used, I think.
Listen, two years ago, you could have told me there was one on the moon, and I still would never have figured it out. So I'm just saying, there's a lot of people that feel very intimidated, or they don't have the ability or the time, you know, to go find, search out some of this.
Sure. And we have that in our office. I mean, hard copy stuff as well.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's, that's part of what we're doing, is getting information out, and it's not, not only on the web, but there's a lot of hard copy stuff, too.
But the information is available if they seeked out that information.
They just need to know where to go.
Where to go, that's right.
Where do you go?
Okay, further questions for Mr. Ogden? Okay, this is part of a public hearing, so at this time, we will accept public input regarding the amendments to the annual action plan.
I'd like to make a few comments on Mr. Ogden, what he's been saying. He did mention about the supposedly the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, maybe he's talking about the one in Weber County, Ogden. I'm going to say this to you, I can already know, I've been born here in Ogden, and most of you here, just by your comments, remarks, you do not understand the population of Hispanics slash immigrants. What is happening again, and we're not going to let that happen again as a nonprofit, and Hispanics that born and reared here, we for, since 2005 Hispanic population, whether we spoke Spanish or English, we were totally ignored, and we've got that all documented. What was focused was on the immigrant who only speaks Spanish community, all those years. We were left out. What I'm saying is now, open your eyes, get a different viewpoint about the Hispanics. There's a high population of Hispanic Americans born here and who do very well and not so well. We are always excluded. You always focus on the Spanish-speaking immigrant, whatever you want to call them. We interact with them, but you put too much time emphasis on their needs. Now, let me say this to you, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, they were the biggest problems since 2005 up until recently. We clashed with them and their boards, and they did their own agenda, and they left us out. So if this happens again, this will, and, and again, we asked the community development, the committee, do you have the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce? If you do, are they the same people that's been there since 2005 up to today? I, I know them all, we know them all. So we're going to see if they are the same people. They do not do justice to the Hispanic people, whether you speak English or not, to this community. They've got their own agenda, and they know who we are, and I know who they are, if it's the same people. All I'm just saying to you, you don't understand. And I do appreciate what you said, is that get one of us that speaks Spanish or born here, and do interact with the immigrant and with the Spanish-speaking people here, because that's what we do. We work, I work within the Ogden City Schools, courts, everything, with Hispanics, immigrants, and Hispanic born here. We can get along if we put the right people in there. But I will guarantee you, if you still focus on the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce with those same people, and we know who they are, we don't know who they are, they won't give us a list, we will make it a point. We will go to the mayor, and we will point out to him exactly what's been going on, because we did with Mayor Godfrey. After he knew what was going on, Mayor Godfrey then realized what was going on. John Patterson, excellent, excellent man. He worked with us Hispanic community, that's why we got along very well with John Patterson. So I'm just saying to you, what Mr. Ogden said, he needs to be educated more about our community. Thank you so much for your time.
William Bryant, I live at 2632 Gramercy, and I think that's kind of the, the neighborhood they were talking about, that 25th Street, or 25th and Jefferson area, that whole area through there. There's a lot of new development as far as making the unit reductions and that. I think that's nice, that's, that's good, because those homes look really nice up there, and, and that's nice. But I'm concerned about the people that used to live in those places, because they have no place to go now, they, they go to the shelters or the budget hotels, and they fill them up, and they go to the rescue mission, and that, and they're homeless, they've got no place to go. And I'm just concerned about that population, what's going to be done for housing for them.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Van Huser to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and further discussion about the amendment? Councilmembers?
Now, one of the ways I was thinking of communication, since we're bringing that up, is isn't it Telemundo, or, I'm sorry, I may not be pronouncing it correctly, a Spanish TV station that is available? If there would be a way to kind of get some of that information out, it might be a positive for everybody, because I can see, we're just not understanding, I think, what our possibilities are, and there certainly are good ways to look for this.
Further discussion? Okay, motion?
I move that we adopt the amendments to the annual action plan and the five-year consolidated plan for 2010, 2015, which is Resolution 2012-2, adopting amendment one to the five-year consolidated plan, and amendment one to the annual action plan from July 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2012. My only question to that is, did we need to add anything else to the dates that he had prescribed?
I think you, you could recognize those and include those, yes.
And include the dates and that Mr. Ogden recommended.
Yes.
We have a motion from Councilmember Van Huser and a second from Councilmember Wicks to adopt Resolution 2012-2, with the amended dates of March 20th submitted to HUD, the CAC on February 2nd, and the public 215 through 316. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Huser?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hyer?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. This resolution passes. Next, we have the annual action plan amendment and the budget opening as a continuation of the public hearing, proposed ordinance 2012-11. Mr. Arrington?
Mr. Chairmembers of the council, before you tonight is an ordinance to put into our accounting structure in the city, the annual action plan, which you've just discussed and approved. Just a couple of clarifying issues. The annual action plan changed the budget by $1,510,140. Mr. Ogden indicated that earlier in November, we had already appropriated $550,000 of this. So this budget opening, as far as the annual action plan, it only addresses $960,140. As I was reviewing this, and this budget opening was prepared with the CBD...
Just for a minute, Mr. Arrington, I think you said $960,000 or $460,000?
No, the annual action plan part is $960,140. That was prepared in connection with the CBDG staff to make sure it coordinates with the annual action plan. As we were reviewing that, I found a budgeting discrepancy from when we adopted the budget last June. At that time, it was suggested that $500,000 be transferred from the general fund down to this block grant program. As we were putting this together, I found out, I didn't find out, but at that time, you removed that $500,000 appropriation from the general fund, did not flow through down to this fund. So in addition to adopting the, the annual action plan budget, we're removing that $500,000 from the accounts appropriated down there. That gets us down to the net amount of $460,140. Again, the $500,000 is just an adjustment to the earlier budget, your actual action on the annual action plan is the $960,140. Are there any questions?
Since it's part of the public hearing, we'll now accept public input regarding the annual action plan amendment for the budget opening specifically.
Seeing no movement, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Blair to close the public hearing for the annual action plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And if there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve proposed ordinance 2012-11.
I second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Stevens to adopt proposed ordinance 2000 dash, or 2012-11. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Van Huser?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. This proposed ordinance passes. Next is, on the agenda is the reports from the Planning Commission. This is to consider the rezon of property at 1302 South to 1590 South and 1401 South to 1483 South Wall Avenue. Mr. Montgomery?
Chairmembers of the council, the Planning Commission had reviewed a petition to consider the zoning of properties, as you had made mention. The, the properties, as you mentioned, are located along Wall Avenue and included a variety of different buildings. Waiting for that to focus, so you can read what those are. It's not quite getting there yet, we'll, we'll see what happens. Sometimes it's just got to take a minute to adjust. But in, in these uses, a lot of them are uses that are typically commercial. And when the petitioner had brought forth the petition, they had a specific building in mind, which had been vacant, and while it had been used as an office for many years, because it was zoned M1, it could no longer have that use. Back many years ago, whatever was allowed in the manufacturing zone also took all the commercial uses and allowed them also, but back in 1990, the ordinance is revised, and those retail uses were no longer allowed in the manufacturing zone, so that created this non-conforming situation. So as the petitioner met with staff and as we reviewed it, we realized that a lot of these properties really are commercial in nature, and to allow them to continue to take the best advantage of the land they have and look at reuse of their properties, it'd be better suited to be commercial. So the petition expanded to include not only the property that he was interested in, but all the properties that were connected from up at 12th Street up in this area on down to where Moyes Glass is, and then properties that Moyes Glass owns across the street on the west side of Wall Avenue. And so those were also included in the petition. As the Planning Commission looked at this, they, of course, looked at the community policies and also the Wall Avenue corridor plan, and noted that several of the policies with the present zoning were inconsistent. It'd be more appropriate to have the zoning reflect the use, to, because of the, the size constraints of the properties, that they really deem themselves more to commercial activities, and to, to rezon the properties commercial. You'll note, and I know that your staff report had talked about, that what the Planning Commission did, they had actually included a piece of property here, a piece of property here, and then the access that goes to the UDOT yard back here, along the frontage, into the zoning petition you're considering. The reason for that was a couple. One, of course, was to just avoid isolated parcels. This parcel, just to have one piece of M1 property between commercial property, or to even, though this is an access back here, in the future, if UDOT does move out, you'd have the full frontage be commercial. And then back here, to leave just this piece of schoolyard property left M1 while everything else around it was commercial. It makes sense to also have that zone boundary line follow where the line is now, rather than follow property lines in this location, because, again, this, this little triangle is zoned M1 at the present time. So the Planning Commission, their recommendation to you, felt that rezoning these properties with these amendments was consistent with both the community plan, the Mountain View Community Plan, the goals and policies found in the general plan, and also the Wall Avenue corridor plan. So their recommendation to you is to rezon all these properties noted to C3.
And Mr. Montgomery, it's our understanding that all of these property owners have been contacted and...
Yes, they have.
Voice support.
Uh-huh, they have. And I know tonight, you've got the petitioner, Delaney Stevens is here, and also one of the property owners, Lance Moyes, is here. If you have questions with them, too.
I see this with signatures, but it doesn't show what they were signing or agreeing to.
Yeah. I, I should make mention that when we sat the public hearing, sent out notices to all the property owners, we had no opposition to the request. I did talk to two or three property owners about it, and I said, yes, we're, we're in favor of it. Do you want us to do anything? And we said, just, if you feel, just give us your opinion.
And this zoning change doesn't affect any of the current businesses?
No, they're, they're, it really make them all conforming uses, rather than non-conforming.
And it was unanimous vote?
It was by the Planning Commission, yes.
Thank you. And at this time, if the petitioner would like to come up, we'd like to hear from him.
My name's Delaney Stevens. Do you need my address also?
For the record, then?
2369 East, 5950 South, Ogden. Basically, I was asked by the property owner to come and talk to the, to the city about the rezon, because basically, most of those uses are commercial currently in an M1 zone. And what I found, when I talked with, with staff, was that they didn't want us to just have the one building kind of as an island within all of the other M1 property. And so they asked me to speak to surrounding neighbors. So I went and talked to each person, and I think there was only one that I spoke with that didn't think their property already was commercial. I said, well, it's here on Wall, it's commercial property, right? And they said, well, no, it's, it's not, that's why we're doing this. And so everybody was more surprised when I talked to them than, you know, questioning what was going on. They said, oh, we thought we already were commercial, so, yeah, no problem here. If there's any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them.
Most of it's commercial anyway, isn't that right, in that area?
It's being used as commercial. Most of it's industrial, but it's been used as commercial for many, many years, yeah.
And the buildings were constructed as commercial type, office space?
Ours is office space, yeah.
Further questions for Mr. Stevens? Thank you, sir. And then, at this time, we'll receive public input regarding this rezon of property. Okay?
Seeing no activity, I will go ahead and make a motion... Seeing no activity, I will go ahead and make a motion to-
Any further discussion from the councilmembers?
Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 2012-13.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Blair to adopt proposed ordinance 2012-13. This is a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Wick?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Huser?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. This motion, or this ordinance passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is new business, and this is consideration of cancellation of the August 7th, 2012 council meeting. And do we want to discuss?
Mr. Chair, just very briefly, there are some community events scheduled for that evening, and the request was made by the administration that a meeting not be held that night. And we are recommending to you that you do hold a meeting on Janu-, excuse me, July 31st, which is the week preceding this, which you had previously canceled, because it's the fifth Tuesday. So that's the reason, and actually, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the events. So maybe if the mayor could help.
It's worldwide on 2/5.
Plus Tour of Utah.
And the Tour, and the Tour of Utah, correct.
I will go ahead and make a motion that we cancel the meeting on August 7th, 2012.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Blair and a second from Councilmember Van Huser to cancel the meeting on August 7th, 2012. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, and we'll cancel that meeting and meet on July 31st. Okay. We're now down to public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding your concerns or ideas. Please limit your comments to three minutes. In this form of government, all city personnel are the responsibility of the administration, not of the council. Please discuss any concerns you may have regarding staff with the mayor, chief administrative officer, or department directors. No public comments. Comments from administration?
I have none at this time.
And council staff?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmembers? Just one comment. I want to thank Justin Anderson for the fly-fishing river restoration fundraiser. I attended that, and Mayor Caldo was there with his two girls, and it was a very enjoyable night, and a good crowd, and hope to get a bigger crowd next year. So thank you for your efforts and the great event that you helped spearhead. Further As a reminder, now we have consideration of adjourning into a closed executive session. Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chair, a closed executive session is permissible for the purposes set forth in the agenda.
And motion to adjourn?
Motion that we adjourn into a closed executive session.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wick and a second from Councilmember Hyer to adjourn into a closed executive session. This is a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Huser?
Aye.
Councilmember Wick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. This is a reminder that a city council work session will be held immediately following the city council meeting. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the Convention and Visitors Bureau Annual Marketing Plan, and to conduct a council-mayor discussion and receive council staff overview of the CIP project for 2013 through 2017, and to conduct discussion on specific CIP projects and council business. Thank you.